Call to action is recommended that council adopt the resolution amending the comprehensive fee schedule for the creation of the public safety utility fee and the minor adjustments. Call to action date is today. Council does have at their discretion to amend most of the fees in the comprehensive fee schedule at any point during the year. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Questions? Rick?
So I have confusion here. Tonight, we're also trying to choose a rate for the utility fee. Is that correct?
That is one of the proposals inside the adjustment to the comprehensive fee schedule.
So you say we have the right to amend the fees at any time. So if we're trying to choose something other than $9 for residential, do we choose that tonight or a week from now? Or how do we, I would say manipulate that?
The Muni code, as far as 8.9 is concerned, allows you to manipulate the rate structure at any point.
Okay, so if we change residential on our utility to support public safety, are we amending that schedule that's there?
We can make a potential, I'm guessing, I'll look at Agusus here, but we could probably make a revision on the fly to what that would be.
If it's agreed by council, yeah.
And consequently, if we change the residential rate, all the rest of them change as well?
That is correct, because it is a proportionate ratio based on the transportation methodology.
Okay, thank you for that.
DJ.
And some of these increases are shocking. Bulk water rates from $4.86 to $9 per unit, can we talk about that one for a second? Eighty-five percent increase.
Which one are we talking here, on this paper here? The fixed enough?
Staff report, page 90 at the bottom, bulk water rate unit from $4.86 to $9. It's not on your arguably minor adjustments.
Sorry, that one actually is a Scrivener's error.
Okay.
I do know that that is something that we updated, but that has and/or should have been updated the last four years, and it never did get updated. But that was voted on in a previous year, so I did look that up, yes.
Okay.
That is fixing it to what it should be as of January 1 this year.
Okay.
Yes, sorry.
And then these minor adjustments or fixed amounts, this is reflecting cost of services?
That is correct. So engineering and public works went through each of these and reevaluated them. Obviously, cost of materials is more today.
Sure, and then what's the manifest cost? What's paying for these? Is this through the utility fees? Is that how these increases are covered?
So these are going to be probably, gosh, I wish Jason were here. Most of these ones that are on the screen here, these are going to, yeah, go back into the utility areas. And so this is to, I guess, not subsidize what we have been potentially subsidizing through rates.
Okay, so do we know what, I mean, if we were to take these averages, what exact impact that's going to have on a rate payer? Or?
I think it's a couple hundred, maybe $1,000 over time a year. And so what they were trying to do was settle it up so that the rates go back to everyday ratepayer items, like the water lines and other kinds of utility maintenance.
Okay. I suppose I'm just not understanding who's paying for these increases.
So these, I believe, are when somebody comes in and asks for something specific for us to do. So when, like, one of these is a small sign. So updating a sign, like, that would be something that not necessarily, I don't think is covered in, or, I don't know, I'm guessing, like, installation of a subdivision, right? Like, this is probably coming from the developer and the cost that it is to bring up our street code.
So these increases are paid for in response to direct request of city services, such as dump trucks and service trucks and stop signs, correct?
That is my understanding, that we externally build that back to the individual, unless anybody else has something.
Is that accurate?
Yes, that is partially accurate. There's some times when we have utilized our equipment to assist private company with regards to, say, the cammering of a lateral or line or something like that. And then these are some fees that are associated with the ability to have us do that, but at a cost, that covering our costs. So we're not utilizing public infrastructure for private gain.
Okay, and that covers, like, most of these costs. I'm really just trying to understand, so what's this going to do to a rate payer, for example? Because we mentioned some of these are direct response to utilization of city services, but then, you know, if somebody wants to go get bulk water, they know that this is going to cost X amount more. I'd just kind of like to know, because some of those are direct response to requests, some of them are, you know, when you purchase certain goods, et cetera. Does that cover all of these proposed increases?
So my understanding right now is the rate payers are subsidizing some of these direct requests as our rates are currently positioned. And so this is trying to correct that subsidy off of rate payers, and when we have that direct request to actually direct bill.
So then, is it correct that then there's going to be alleviation in the rates, then, since we're compensating now for the true cost?
I think there's not a plethora of these instances. So the dollar amount in total probably isn't large. It was just trying to make it correct for when it is, or when it does occur that it is covering the cost.
These are rare, rare occurrences. They're not something that we normally do.
Okay. I'm sorry, I'm just not feeling, like, absolute certainty of what we're talking about. Maybe I'm misunderstanding, or, I'm just, sorry, my dots just aren't totally connected here, I'm sorry. Maybe it's late, maybe I'm tired, I don't know, but I'm not getting that confidence in this is what it looks like by increasing the service and unit rates.
Rick has something on the same line.
So, yes, I want to elaborate on that further. So if you have a developer that's coming in with a subdivision, is he required to come to the city and get all his signs, or can he go and do it privately?
I'm not an expert on when we charge these and when we don't charge these.
The city installs on a subdivision. If it's in the public right of way, those signs get installed by the city.
Okay, and then, second question. If they want to change the name on the sign or something, can they just go to a commercial sign place, or do they have to come back to the city?
No, they would come back to the city on that example.
Okay, so in that case, then that's when these fees would be used?
Yeah, I'm not able to speak to the public works fees. I can tell you that from the planning side, I was able to answer that question, but I don't.
Right, but what I was saying, the developer is required to come to the city for all their signs. And if somebody lives on the street, let's say all the people living on the street decide they want to change the name, they still have to come back to the city and pay that fee and get it done by the city. They can't go to the sign shop and say, hey, we want to do a paystover.
For a public sign, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Questions? DJ?
I suppose this is my fault for not seeing this coming and not asking these clarifying questions beforehand, but I'm not getting the full understanding. I think that I need to be comfortable adopting something like this.
So I would suggest, council, if you're going to make a motion on this, to please make an adjustment in the motion that excludes the other adjustments as included in page 90. And we can bring that up at a future agenda meeting.
Okay, further questions? Valerie, then Rick?
Oh, yeah, I guess I just want to clarify, because it kind of seems like this was the time, if we're going to do the $9, because that's what's on this, that we need to adjust that $9. And so I just want to make sure that that, to me, is my understanding, is that $9 on the water fee is not going to do anything for what we need to do for public safety. And I'm not saying we need to shoot it sky high, but the reality of it is, is that we will not be able to help our public safety if we don't pass more than the $9. And so that brings me back to my question that was earlier, and I don't know, I may have a wrong matrix, because, you know, I've had so many of them, that I've pulled off from who knows where. But on this particular matrix, the 4.7 was like $16.95, and I don't know if that's old, and if the newer one was 17.25, I don't know. But I do feel committed to public safety enough to know that they need help now. And if we're not going to be able to do anything and make any decisions until after November, which puts it off in terms of us being able to help public safety become, be able to deal with what they're dealing with right now and get over the callbacks and the burnout, that it's going to need to be more than nine. So at this point, is that what I need to do, is propose? And so that's why I'm asking you. Give me that number, so that we can start making them whole now.
So there's two targets that we've talked about in the past in previous workshops, and that is the, what is the budget gap to fund? And that's $3.3 million. And for utility fee to fund that, that'd be about $12 per month. And then there is the additional revenue for the additional FTE that you're talking about, Councilor Lovelace, and that would be about $4.8 million, which would be the 17.25 per month.
Rick, did you have a question? You had your hand up a minute ago.
Okay, so I'm just trying to clarify.
With the eight people?
Oh, sorry. So if we're going to amend the fee schedule, 17.25 would cover the 4.8 million, but it still doesn't cover 100% of the needs, or it does?
So the 17.25 would provide direction and a budget that would allow for the budget officer and finance in the city to plan on implementing that fee that would go into effect around June. And then we would also be budgeting for the additional FTE, as we've proposed in the past, with those additional FTEs for police and fire.
So what I hear you saying, I'm just repeating, the 4.8 million would be adequate for the eight new positions?
Yes.
On fire and police?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
DJ?
Through how many years?
Well, there's some projections that we would have to consider. There's collective bargaining agreements that would need to come into play, and we are in open negotiations with one of the two collective bargaining unions right now. We'll be in negotiations a year from now with another one. So, plus then we've got the PERS and other associated costs. So that might be a little harder, but those are some of the things that we have to consider moving forward. JC might be able to provide a better idea of, if you did a 17.25, does that mean that we can have some stability for multiple years? And?
Yes, would you please?
Yeah, I mean, I would guess, right? Educationally.
Understanding that. We're trying to make educated guesses here. I think we all understand that.
I would guess that that would make it through a year, maybe two even. But going out into the future with the increases that we've seen in all the other areas, and some of the potential decreases in some of the other economic factors that I'll go through later tonight, I would say one or two might be a best-case scenario at that rate.
While also keeping our general funded effectively zero. Is that true?
At the zero, meaning the?
Zero, meaning there's like 100 grand there, and that's effectively zero for a general fund, that's what I mean.
That's not adding to some large kind of facility potentially, yes.
It's not freeing up additional general fund jurisdictions.
Other questions? All right, no more questions at this time. We're going to open up for public comment, and Jay Meredith is on the phone. Go ahead, Jay.
Hi, good evening again. Jay Meredith, city resident. Thanks for, again, for giving me the opportunity to speak to you by phone. I wanted to clear up a couple of things. I'm extremely confident that a $9 utility fee will meet the needs for the next fiscal year, and it probably would have to be closer to 12 in the year after that. And the reason, one of the reasons I'm confident that that would meet the needs, including the need to hire eight more public safety professionals, is that in the last couple of years, the general fund's performance has greatly exceeded budget estimates. And after a couple of years of overly cautious budget estimates, the general fund stood at 42% of annual expenditures as of the end of the fiscal '23 year. And so you have a lot of financial flexibility to phase in these increases to make it less impactful on residents' expenses. So I'm confident that's the right thing to do. On the splitting out of commercial A, I am not proposing to change anything about how the ITE manual works with the calculation. I'm simply stating that, so commercial A is any business that has up to 250 trips per day. Commercial B is 251 to 500. I am simply saying that we should use the exact same ITE methodology, but split out commercial A into two additional categories. I don't see any risk in doing that. So commercial, you know, A1 can be trips up to 75 per day or 50 per day. A2 can be 75 to 150 per day, and then A3 can be 150 to 250. We can play with those numbers. So the only downside to looking into that further is it will add another 30 to 60 days to the implementation time. And, sorry, JC and your staff.
That's the red light, Jay.
That just will take a little, you know, look. Okay, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the room who wanted to speak on this issue? Go ahead, David.
Hi, David Dapper, city resident. You're thinking about putting one thing on the ballot, the restaurant, maybe think on the general sales tax on the ballot, too, that people decide multiple issues. Thanks.
I think you might know what I'm going to say. I support the utility fee to fully fund public safety, and then if the people want to vote for any other type of taxes, including the food and beverage or the sales, then they can vote that in, and then you could lower the utility fee. Thank you.
Dell Aldridge, City Grants Pass. I think you're fooling yourself if you're going to put one thing on the ballot and expect people to vote for it. You saw how much opposition for the restaurant tax was here. That's just a little portion of what we've seen by walking around downtown. I think you need to put a lot of things on the ballot. Put in a few, put in a few of them, let them vote. Let them know that if they don't vote on one of these, we're going to have to start cutting our place, which we all know are overstretched already. The drug use in the park is out of control. Literally, we were at the park with a park meeting, and we got cod the cops on us, because we pulled guns on them. We had it on videotape, it didn't happen. But while the cops were sitting there, there's our drug dealer pulling right through with a guy with a masted, walking right behind him. Every day, at that time, he'd come through the park. There's another one that is just a homeless guy, goes from park to park, little bag, selling. Everybody rushes to him. This is not something that you can't catch. It's there every day. You've got cameras in every park. Why can't you catch these people and put them in jail? Oh, I know why, because you let them out the next day. Because you've got a public attorney guy, or district attorney, that works out of his house. Where'd that one come from? This is getting me angrier in hell. Oh, I want to compliment you. That little show earlier with the addiction center, thank you. That takes care of one little slice. We've got another slice of people that need a place to go. We need a place for people to go that are not on drugs, that want to camp in one place every day and feel safe. These elderly out there on their own, get something going on that. I'm losing my taste here, sorry. Time's slow, two minutes is really fast now. Something like a low barrier campsite really needs to be done. And like I said, I'll go back. Everything that you just said about having a restaurant, it's not going to happen. Get four choices on the ballot. Thank you.
Anybody else wanted to comment on the utility fee? All right, we'll close public comment and turn it over to council. DJ?
So there seems to be a misunderstanding about diversifying those strata, if you will. We have one camp that says that we're going to have to totally do another analysis to have a legally defensible structure for a rate to pay for public safety, as we're using what has already been structured as the transportation fee. And then there seems to be another opinion that diversifying commercial A could be as simple within the boundaries of the research that's been done to be legally defensible. Can we completely iron that out, please, until we all have an absolute understanding of what that looks like and the possibilities that are being discussed?
Yeah. So I think if you want to adopt a fee tonight, you would need to adopt what we currently have established as the transportation fee. I think if you want to look at trying to separate out other categories, but still keep it based on the transportation model, that's something we can explore. And it would take some time to accomplish that. And I think you would likely want to do the same with the transportation fee that's in existence, because I believe in order for you to keep the methodology whole, you'd need to look at not only the transportation fee, but the new public safety utility fee at the same time. So is it potential, is there a potential, as long as we maintain a strict adherence to the ITE manual, then, and we find a rationale that is associated with that, then I think that's possible. If you're wanting to stray from the ITE manual, then it's going to take a lot more time, and we would recommend a study with an independent consultant, so we can have a defensible methodology. So that gives you sort of a range. But definitely, if you want to make a change other than what we've got right now, if you're wanting to try to break it down, then you would not be passing this tonight. And you would provide us direction to maybe look at a workshop studying what other options we have to break down the ITE manual further into different classifications. And I think, like Councilor Day LaGrange mentioned earlier, if you break it down, what you're doing is you're just transitioning. You still need to come up with that 4.8 million. So you'll be increasing some other levels of commercial to decrease certain levels of commercial, so.
Follow-up question, if you don't mind. So it's possible to stratify commercial A, understand the bootstrap effect under the current ITE manual that we have adopted?
I mean, we can look at it. The part I worry about right now is we do have it adopted to reference back the 8.60 municipal code, which is off the transportation methodology, which is strict on what classifies as A and the number of trips. So now we'd be reopening 8.90 and redefining what that methodology is for each of those classifications, and ergo creating a very new classification.
Sure. And then, the goal being implementation and utilization of these fees by June 1, if we were to entertain that, is that a realistic goal?
If you wanted to entertain it, you'd have to amend the ordinance that you just adopted.
The question being, can we still meet our target date of implementation and utilization if we were to go down this road?
I mean, that's hard for me to answer.
Obviously, best guess here.
I think it depends on how, I'm not an ITE manual person, how difficult that would be to set a ratio. So it's setting a ratio based on the classifications, and so they're structured as such. So if you're trying to go in between two different classifications, what is fair? That would be the question of, I don't know, I don't know enough about the ITE manual to figure out what that would be.
Yeah, we would need to look at the ITE manual a little more, and is it possible? Yes. It also depends on how much input from the commercial sector and the public you would also like to gather through that process, and how aggressively you would like to schedule that for future workshops or special sessions. So can it be done? If that's what council would like to have done, we'll make it happen, and we'll propose a schedule to be in alignment to where we can try to implement a fee come June.
Right. The reason I'm asking, because this is a timely decision, you know, and I don't, you know, if you were to say, oh my gosh, this is going to take nine months, then we'd be foolish to pursue. But if it's in the realm of possibility, then perhaps it's worthy of discussion.
So, you know, again, I can't project how long it would take for council to come up with that. We can make suggestions, but then it's going to have an impact on the commercial A, B, C, D. It could have multiple, you could be changing. So what kind of input and feedback would you get from the business sector changing those fees in two categories now? I don't know what that would look like from a public standpoint.
Sure. Thank you.
Rick, and then Brian.
So, Aaron, I just want to clarify something. We use the figure of 17.25 is necessary to make public safety whole. Okay, that 17.25, does that have to appear in the schedule on 89? Or is that a figure we can use, again, cross-referencing the IT manual? You know what I'm saying?
With the cross-reference of the ITE manual and the transportation fee that's been established, that was adopted in the ordinance you just adopted, establishing that base 17.25, everything else is calculated off of that, which brings you to that $4.8 million. So if you were, I'm not sure if this is where you're going, but if you were going to where, let's just adopt a fee that brings 4.8, and we'll figure it out later, that wouldn't quite work, because we'd really have to readdress the original ordinance that was passed for the utility fee that references the transportation utility fee.
Okay, so I'm sorry, I'm not making myself clear. Can we adopt the 17.25 tonight, or we have to go through a special session and totally redo this?
The, no, the handbook of fees and charges here that's in front of you and amending the comprehensive fee schedule, you can adopt the 17.25, which would provide the $4.8 million tonight. It would be adopting it based on our current transportation fee and the methodology that's established.
Okay, so they'd be complementing each other?
They'd be identical, except for the base fee.
Okay, thank you.
Brian, and then Val.
Are we still in questions?
Well, no, we're in discussion. I think we already did public comment on this, but I have to say it's getting harder and harder to keep track.
Yeah, yeah, things are getting very muddy and very unraveled, and while I appreciate the idea of trying to stratify commercial A, stratifying commercial A does nothing to take that segment and make it smaller as far as the revenue, because I think the basis of that was like, let's put it more on the bigger companies, but bigger companies aren't in commercial A. So if you're going to do that, you have to redo the whole schedule. And also, if you're going to stratify Schedule A, we're going to have to go to every business and count how many cars, you know, because we don't have a smaller study segment for commercial A, like, you know, if we did 0 to 50, you know, how would we decide who's commercial A1 and commercial A2? Sounds like a total nightmare. So if we want to have any additional public safety funding anytime soon, I suggest we, at the very least, defer this, if not abandon it completely.
Valerie?
Yeah, that brings me back, because you talked about the gap funding. The gap funding of 3.3, correct, is basically not hiring, not doing anything, just surviving right where we're at right now, correct?
That's keeping the FTE as we have right now, and filling the funding gap that we have of general fund that we have right now of 3.3 million.
Okay, so looking at this, and I know this must be an older one, because it's a little bit off, but $10 only raises 2.8, so we're not even getting out of the gap at 9. We're actually in the hole, and we're going to have to make cuts if we're at 9. So I think that pretty well tells us that 9 is not going to work. So we have to be willing to take a plunge and go somewhere. And I know that, you know, there's some people in here who don't want to do it, because they're afraid, and I understand. But once again, we, well, afraid to burden people with a $17.25 utility fee. But I honestly think, and after having the honor of going to the session today and listening and seeing the families and seeing how the needs of our public safety, I think all of us up here know what they're working under, and that it's not okay, and we have to increase the funding to make it right for them. So- So I'm going to propose that we do the $17.25, knowing that, number one, we can reduce it as we move forward. And I make a commitment to get out to the public, to educate them and try to bring it down in some way, because I do feel that that's too high. But we need public safety. And I also know that we can take, I talked to, to Jay C. earlier today about taking the, and putting a percentage, a big chunk of money to the St. Vincent de Paul, who currently is the one I think that we've been giving money for, is that who we've been giving money for? So that people who need assistance and are going to get their water shut off have a place to go to get money to help them, because that's a part of what we do and what we've always done. So I think it's important that we do that. In terms of, I mean, and Jay, I'm just going to talk to you because I, I've been down this road with you a long time. I truly appreciate you. But I also will say that you're a little bit more risk, risky than, than what I feel comfortable with right now. And the reason I say that is because I also know that in your reign was when we bought the public safety building, when we bought Dollar Mountain, when we bought the gas station and all those things, because we were told that, yes, we had lots of money. We had lots of money because we had missing staff. And yes, we did those things. There's not a single thing of that I wouldn't say that was a good thing for the long-range plan of the city. But I think we're dealing with some of those repercussions right now. And I am going to be a little bit more risk adverse and say that I want to do what I think is right for our city to have a healthy public safety. So I'm going to make a motion to, to put a 1725 instead of the $9 on the comprehensive fee schedule. And another thing too, is that we'll go up with the cost of living, just for, for your information, which is all the more reason for us to say, let's put on a tax or whatever. But I think that it will, and if, if Jay is right, well, maybe we can make it for three years instead of two. But I feel more comfortable making sure that we're in a good place.
I just want to clarify that your motion is to adopt the amendments to the comprehensive fee schedule that would include the other adjustments, kind of as outlined on the top of page 90? Or are you?
I was taking it that those would potentially be excluded because she only mentioned the, the utility fee, public safety utility fee.
I, I did.
But it would be.
Yeah. And then I think we need to come back with another motion for the rest, because I know DJ has some questions about wanting to know more information on that.
So your motion is just regarding the public safety utility fee and it would be at a level of 1725 for residential customers with the appropriate increases as outlined on our previous matrix?
Yes.
Okay. Seconded by Rick. Discussion on that motion. Joel.
Well, one of the things that strikes me is there's already a difference in classification between A, B, C, D, and E based on, on some criteria. So further dividing that classification into A would not be that, that challenging, I don't think. But we would have to look at it because it's already been done. So I, I don't, Brian, I would disagree with you on that respectfully, and that's okay. The other thing is we do have a surplus in the general fund, and that's what Jay is talking about, is a short-term fix versus a long-term fix. And then seeing, because there's several unknowns that we have. One is what's going to happen with the restaurant and beverage tax in November. The other is where are we going to finish in terms of our, our, our carryover? We don't know everything right now. And, and we're planning on the $17, given some assumptions, because we don't know everything. We know that it could go down if, if it's passed, well, it will go down if it's passed, if the beverage and food thing is passed. So I kind of favor a little bit less. 17 bucks is okay. It's less than a pizza that people eat out on a month, unfortunately. So I'll be voting for it, but I, if, if there was a consensus to make it a little less than that and take a little more risk till we know what these other unknowns are, I'd, I'd support that also.
Erin, did you have something?
Yeah, I just want to add, because I'm hearing conversation, there is a possibility with the passage of this motion, as it states, that it doesn't stop council for still looking at separating A and looking at the methodology moving forward. We could pass this. You could send the message that we're securing that funding, but that we also want to take a look at both of the utility fees associated with the current transportation methodology. And you could change those within, you know, when, when they get changed, we can redo the, the fee schedule. If, if that's something you're interested in, we could do that also.
Dwayne, and then Brian, and then Val.
I'm just going to lay my, my cards on the table tonight. I came in tonight wanting around a $12, I might even go up to $13 utility fee, and that's all I feel comfortable with. So I'm just going to lay it out there. That's where I feel comfortable. I want to support law enforcement. I want to support, you know, firefighters, but, you know, we're not even going to, any police officers for a year if we start it today unless we get a, you know, lateral. So I, and then maybe we might get a tax approved. So today I, I will be voting no for 17, but if we're going to go at about 12 or 13, I will vote yes.
Brian, and then Val.
So at 1725, that equals $207 per year for every elderly widowed person that is on a fixed income, for every single mother that has three kids that's scraping by, for any other scenario you can imagine that us on the dais do not live with. We don't live with these situations. We need to be mindful of who's in our community and what $200 a year is going to mean as far as forcing another payment on them, even though it's called a fee. Okay? It's going to be almost $700 per year for every small business. There's a lot of small businesses that that's going to be a real burden on. So I feel like we're a little out of touch up here, and I'm absolutely voting no on this.
Valerie, then Vanessa.
Yeah, I, I get it. I mean, my mother lived on a fixed income and I know she would have voted yes. And the reason was, is my mother was living alone and there was nobody living around her. She's very vulnerable and public safety is all the more important to the people that are more vulnerable. We have something in place to help people that need it. And I think that those are the people that need public safety more than anybody. So I know, you know, that I get inferred that, you know, that I'm rolling in dough and so it's no problem to me, but that's not the case because I have, I've lived poor, I've lived at the bottom, I know what it's like. But I also know that when I call 911, because there's somebody at my door and I'm home alone, I want to know that somebody's going to show up. When I have a stroke, as my mom did, the last time she got out of her house was by the firefighters, who, when her alarm went off and hit 9911, they were there and they took her out, took her to get help. And that's important. It's important to them. So I'm willing to go out on a limb and say, we have things in place for those people that need them. I happen to know that there are 500 people who are in subsidized housing in our community. It will be paid for by the government. It is not taken out of their income. So there are means by, to get them help. I will also say, and I did talk with Erin about this, in terms of hiring, if we don't know that we have a revenue stream, we can't hire. So hiring, and it takes a year to train police officers. It takes at least several months. And I know for a fact, after talking with the fire department today, that they are very stretched. This is the time right now that they have. They have spring to train people and they have fall, because in summertime, they can't train anybody, because they are stretched as thin as could be. So if they're going to get somebody hired up and get them in place to help them, then it needs to happen now. It doesn't need to happen, you know, down the road. So that's why. I know it's a hard thing to do and I refuse to feel that I don't have a heart for people who don't have money. I do. That's why I stress that there are means to give them help. I had my, my own mother who was saved multiple times by the fire department. And I know she would have done anything to pay it, or us children would have stepped at the plate to make sure she had that safety. So that's my comments.
Vanessa, then DJ, then Rick.
I'm afraid this really is the least equitable option in moving forward to stabilizing police, fire, and dispatch service revenues. Under this model, single-family households would pay an additional $207 a year, and the largest bulk of our commercial would pay almost $700 a year additionally. Under the previously discussed food and beverage tax, for the single-family residential, for them to pay the same amount, the $207 a year, they would have to purchase $100 worth of food 68 times, in essence, would have to spend over $6,000 to pay that $204 in taxes. What would have been a pass-through tax, and actually restaurateurs would have received a 5% kickback for administrative fees. So not only would their time be reimbursed, but it would be a pass-through tax to the consumer. We're now simply putting it right on their shoulders, and I cannot support that.
Rick. Sorry, DJ. DJ, then Rick, I'm sorry. I was trying to skip you, but you.
We, we all laugh about this, that's fine. 1725 is too much. Just period. We can get by with 12 or 13, see what November does. I think it's kind of obvious that this number is going to have to increase, even if our goal was to only maintain current level of service. That's going to go up five, six dollars a year approximately, if the projections are correct. But I'm, I'm kind of aligned with, with Joel here on this one, and, and I believe Dwayne said the same thing, that, that's just too much money. And that's where I'll be.
Rick.
I'm in favor of the 1725. We need the funding. We need to give the message out there to both fire and police that we're behind them. We need to have adequate funding now so they can be out looking for new recruits to fill those positions and not be in a holding pattern. Also, the comment was made, as time goes on, if situation changes, like if food and beverage gets put into effect, we can reduce that fee. So I will be in support of this idea. Thank you.
I think I've told you all, and I did make the tie-breaking vote last fall and didn't pass this when we were talking about $27 or $30. And I, I do not agree with adding staff on the utility bill. So, which is what we're talking about doing here, is not just funding the, the gap of $3.3 million, but also adding eight staff positions. And what you have done tonight has not come up with a good long-term solution. I don't think anybody's, you know, afraid of adding, you know, to the utility bill, but people are apparently afraid of coming up with a good long-term solution, which is what we've been talking about really exhaustively for the last two years. And, and now it circles back around to the idea that I already said I wouldn't support. So I just want to let you know again, before you vote, depending on how this thing goes, I, I will not sign off on 1725. So DJ.
Sheriff, this is Rob. Can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead, Rob.
Yeah. Yeah, I've been trying to talk for a while. But anyway, yeah, the 17, well, what I, what I find really problematic with this concept is there hasn't been a, you know, there hasn't been a video shot of the room in quite some time, but my sense is that the room is probably pretty close to empty at this point. And, you know, had this been, this meeting been advertised as, you know, council proposed a $17 utility fee, it may have been a whole different, a whole different crowd of people that would come in to speak to council. I mean, Joel talked earlier about, you know, listening to the people. Well, the bottom line is, is that the people were never told that this was really an option for tonight. You know, obviously the most savvy would have known that anything could happen and everything was in play. But this was never advertised as far as a council, a realistic council possibility. And again, this is every bit as much a transitional, transactional tax as anything else that council has been talking about. It's just that this is a forced transaction. If you want to live in the city, you know, you have to essentially buy into our, our water bill, you know, our water bill program. It's a forced transaction. And $17 is just, is just, is just way too much, you know? It's, I think Vanessa did the math there, you know? I mean, the people are concerned about restaurant customers not having the ability to, to dine out. If the meal was, you know, $2, $3 more, they'd have to dine out in a year 68 times to equal the amount they're going to be spending here. So clearly this, this utility fee would ultimately be just as damaging to any local business as the restaurant tax would have been. It's just that the restaurant tax would have been discretionary and the people could have decided who was going to pay it and who wasn't. This one, you're forcing the transaction at a very high rate. I, I can't support $17 or anything really even close to that. Thank you.
DJ.
Thank you. So Rick, I kind of wanted to expand about sending the message to the people. You'd mentioned the message of supporting public safety. Well, my fealty is to the constituents, and I feel that that's too much. The message that needs to be delivered is what it takes to support public safety, right? We look at the last 10 years and property taxes, levy, and then, you know, we're talking of, in excess of 50% of our general fund after year five is going to go to public safety, you know? And I believe that that slow drip allocation of public safety is, is the main contributor to this, this community not understanding the budgetary crisis that we have, right? So I think if we continue down that road and we ask for more than what we truly need in excess of maintenance of the, the current minimum that we have, I, I'm not sure if that's necessarily delivering that accurate message, especially considering that we need to go, we need to go to the ballot, right? There's, there's, there's wisdom, there's logic, there's strategy in saying, this is what it takes, this is where we are, and this is what we're willing to do, because we absolutely must do it. And if the community wants growth, they've been demonstrated, clearly demonstrated to them that this is what it's going to take. And if you want more, then it's going to take more, whether it's a general sales tax or otherwise. Not meaning to belittle, belittle your opinion, I totally respect your opinion, but, but I believe that's also an important message that we need to, we need to, we need to be delivering, you know? And I think that something south of 1725, something north of $10, that, that we might even get into the point where we can entertain, okay, some growth back to where we were before we started cutting the budgets. I, I really do believe that if we crunch those numbers, that that's, that's a realistic possibility. So I will be voting yes on this if we get to, you know, a more reasonable, a reasonable rate to support what we have.
All right. Right now we have a motion on the table that would adopt this comprehensive, well, it would just adopt the rate for the public safety utility fee and not make the other amendments to the comprehensive fee at the rate of 1725 for a single-family residential and increasing proportionately. I think we're ready to vote on that and maybe have some more discussion. So Valerie, you made the motion. How do you vote?
Yes.
Brian?
No.
Vanessa?
No.
Rick?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
DJ?
No.
Dwayne?
No.
Rob?
No.
Motion fails, 5 to 3. Another idea? Joel?
Well, I'd like to make a motion to fund the water. I should look at the exact wording, shouldn't I? Let me see. Adopt the resolution amending the comprehensive fee schedule. Adopt the resolution amending the comprehensive fee schedule to acknowledge the inclusion of the public safety utility fee and other minor adjustments, with the public safety utility fee being in the interim, let's go for twelve dollars.
Is there a second? D.J.
Are you willing to make the amendment to, to get some further clarification on the increases on page ninety?
Would your motion?
Do you want that?
Yes, please.
Okay. I'll amend the motion to include, would you please repeat that?
Yeah, to not temporarily omit the increases on ninety-two, be talked about a date certain.
So I think the motion that you're trying to get at is that you're, you're implementing a fee. Read it exactly as, as it is, but don't read in addition to the, the additional fees. Leave that, leave that part of the sentence out, and you'll have that motion.
Start with the minor adjustments.
In your motion, do, do not read "and minor adjustments."
Oh, okay. So I amend my motion to delete "and other minor adjustments."
Okay. So you are, your motion is to adopt the resolution that would amend the comprehensive fee schedule to acknowledge the inclusion of the public safety utility fee at a rate of twelve dollars per single-family household and adjusted proportionally for the other rate codes. Is that, okay. Joel's saying yes. Seconded by Rick. Discussion on that motion? We, I'll, go ahead, D.J.
Do we have a date certain for that? Perhaps the next business meeting, I think, would be appropriate.
For, oh, for the other?
To discuss the adjustments.
The others? Yeah, wherever council would like to. We can, we're ready to discuss that at your next business meeting or your next workshop.
Very good.
Dwayne, did you want to say something?
No, Joel took my thunder.
Okay. Yeah, I think he wanted to make the motion. I didn't see it on time. Belle?
Yeah, I just, I just want to know where that twelve dollars will put us in terms of, will that give, get us to a place where we have all of the people that we have right now and filling in the, it does not fill in any of the hole in the general fund. Am I correct? So it just allows us to keep what we have right now.
It will keep, it'll keep status quo. It'll provide about three-point-three million dollars, which will, which will fill the gap that's needed. We won't, we do not project that we would need to do any kind of budget cut discussions for this upcoming fiscal year budget that we'd be proposing to the Budget Committee.
Rick?
I cannot be, I know I seconded it, but I cannot be supportive, because we need to support fire, we need to support police, we need to know what their future is, and their future is right now. And we're just kicking the can down the road. I see, I fear an exodus, and if we lose people, we'll never be able to fill that. So I don't want to go down that road. Thank you.
Further discussion? All right. So the motion is to adopt this utility, public safety utility fee at a rate of twelve dollars for a single-family residential and proportionate for other rate code descriptions. And Joel, you made the motion. How do you vote?
So I'm going to add a little color comment to it, and I would also look at the, the carryover, but yes, I'll vote yes.
D.J.
Yes.
Valerie?
No.
Brian?
No.
Vanessa?
No.
Rick?
No.
Joel? Excuse me, Dwayne?
Yes.
And Rob?
Yes.
All right. We are tied four for four, and I am going to vote yes. This will provide us with a stopgap solution for this year. Unfortunately, I think that what we've done here is, after spending two, two years or so addressing this problem, we're now three years, thirty years, you know, we've now come upon an election year here where we know that one counselor is already planning to leave us, and several others are up for reelection, and we have probably kicked this can to a whole new council, and there you go. We have some more items on our agenda tonight. Unfortunately, we're now at the eleventh hour, and we need to deal with Council Action Item Two A, because our city attorney, who has helped draft this for us, isn't going to be here next month. So we need to, we wanted to make sure your, your last meeting here was a good one, Augustus, and give you that full.
I was going to say, like, you guys, you guys ain't letting me go easy. Hey, shout, and shouts to everybody who's still here, like, that's, that's crazy.
Like to make sure people are really glad when they leave us.
I'm going to present the humanitarian services ordinance. So, kind of the background, humanitarian services are being offered in city parks to the homeless. Some of it is group-centric, some of it is one-to-one. The city, as a matter of course, is entitled to know what's happening on their property. And the primary intent of this ordinance is more about oversight and less about regulation. So I brought something to council that was kind of similar last July, a little bit more stringent on the rules. This is a collaboration between myself, Mint, and with input from the HIV Alliance. And so we worked through these, we worked through this concept ordinance over span of November, December, January, February, so about three months. So the ordinance would create a shall-issue registration process for humanitarian services events. It would also provide due process in the case of the revocation or the denial of a registration. So in drafting this, we tried to take the most narrow, the most narrow view of, you know, what we're wanting to regulate, right? We're wanting to make it, make it conform to the First Amendment, because individuals have a right to give out food and clothing as part of their First Amendment-protected activity. However, that, that doesn't foreclose reasonable time, place, and manner regulations. And like I said, we received actionable feedback from stakeholders and affected parties. So here's the definition of humanitarian service event. So a non-social gathering that's planned, organized, promoted, or advertised by private persons, nonprofits, or any organization charitable or otherwise, at a city park or on publicly-owned property, where you give out food, clothing, or navigational services. And clothing includes sleeping bags, bedding, portable structures, and then compressed combustible materials, think propane tanks, kerosene tanks, things of that nature. Drug paraphernalia, that's pretty self-explanatory. Navigation services, again, pretty self-explanatory. I will draw some attention to the needle exchange event. So this was a point of contention, but I think that we reached a pretty happy medium with it. So needle exchanges, where a group goes out and gives clean syringes and takes used syringes. That won't be allowed in the park. However, it won't foreclose an individual with a group going around to collect dirty syringes from people who are in the parks using a Sharps container. And so that's highlighted in that last section. Needle exchange events shall not include events where the sole purpose is to collect used hypodermic syringes, needles, or other similar objects used or designed for injecting substances into the human body for proper disposal. And then finally, definition of registrant, private persons, nonprofits, and other organizations, regardless of their type, who want to hold these events. The unlawful activity, so you can't have a humanitarian service event without being registered with the city. You can't do needle exchange programs. You can't give out compressed combustible materials or other flammable materials. And violations of this section will be, will be punishable by citation and park exclusion for thirty days. Okay. So the registration procedure, at least as I view it, is pretty straightforward.